Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on December 12th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Eldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Coram is present, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Tonight Pastor Larry Tweet's going to lead us in invocation and Councilwoman Brandy Bailey's going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Lord, I come to you tonight, ask you once again for help. Lord, here in Park City, things are going pretty good. But Lord, around the world, we're facing some awful messes. We need your help. I pray, God, stretch forth your hand of mercy over this city and over this people. Hear our prayer, O Lord, and answer speedily, I pray. Lord, wherever there's people, Lord, in Israel, in Russia, in China, or all of the nation of the earth, I pray for the leaders of those nations, that they will find a way to move in peace. Lord, and here in our little part of the world, let your presence be felt as you guide us and instruct us in the ways of peace on earth and goodwill towards men. Thank you, Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderstood, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And John?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All, Tom?
I didn't quite get there in time, I'm sorry. There was a correction to the minutes, I don't know if that happened or not. I sent an email.
It did happen, but it was not sent back out.
So there was one of these-
I believe we need to remove those minutes.
Have they been corrected in the consent agenda?
But they're not approved in the packet.
Okay, so, um...
Can we just re-
George and John, would you like to have us remove?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
There's two weeks' worth in there. One of them had an error in it and I don't, I'm trying to find it. And it was... Bear with me for just a second. It's, uh, the 14th. And it was a name-
It is November 14th, 2017, yeah.
Well, I would just ask that that one be removed for...
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove the minutes for November the 14th.
And add that as item M.
And add that as item M.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion or changes? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight zero. Rick? Tonight we have Dee Stewart signed up to speak at public forum. Dee?
Thank you, Dee Stewart, Park City Pride. A couple of weeks ago, our chairperson, Jan McGonigal, came and went through a list of Pride projects over the years. And so there were some things that we wanted to talk about a little bit further. I know you're all aware that we're working really hard to save Pride for Park City after 25, 26 years. We need help. Not so much financial help, you know, we manage that most of the time, but this, we need muscles. I thought I'd bring you up to date on some of the things that we're working on now that we're, that are current projects, that are ongoing projects. And of course, you all know about the food pantry, which is monthly distribution. Thanksgiving and Christmas distributions. Do you need to interrupt?
No, I'm sorry, Dee.
I thought you, I thought he was going to give me that baby. Okay. Thanksgiving and Christmas boxes, we're working on those. Now Thanksgiving went out, we served 37 families, they got turkeys and all the fixings for Thanksgiving dinner. The backpacks went out over Thanksgiving because we had a week-long break. We're doing backpacks now for the children, not just the Chisholm Trail Elementary this year, because we had more donations of small items that could go in bags to go home to help them get through the next couple of weeks when they're, when they, when they get no lunches at school. But we had some extra, and so Jan contacted the Valley Center School District, and all the children who get backpacks ordinarily in the Valley Center School District will also get one from Park City Pride, whether they live in Park City or whether they live in Valley Center. So we're doing that, and we do that every year, and we'll do it again in the spring over spring break, and we'll, if we're still around, we'll do it in late summer when there's a break between summer lunches and when school starts. Disc golf, we had our second disc golf tournament last month. We had 90 slots open, it was called AM Jam and Throw Pink, aimed at amateur disc golf players and lady golf players. And there were 90 slots and we had 90 reservations, 90 people who had, who had paid their money two weeks ahead. That morning dawned cold and windy and wet, and it was so nasty. And we got out there and 88 of those fools showed up. Eighty-eight of the 90. And so we had our tournament and we had to go, and we had, ended up having to go to the Pride Center where we crammed over 100 people in the Pride Building for their awards ceremony. But it was, it was a big success, and we're working towards doing another one in April. Park City Alive, been going on for, I think, something like 18 years. We're famous for Park City Alive with the Kansas Humanities Council, with even the National Humanities Council. I don't need that thing. Because, because ours has been going so long and because we have consistent attendance of about 20 people at least, and because half of our attendees are male, that's just not typical. We have big city libraries that have five people show up for their humanities events. Gardens on Grove Street, we started doing that a couple of years ago, we put in a butterfly garden. This, this year, this summer, we have a butterfly garden, and we'll, we will continue working on the gardens. Movies in the Park, there's a question mark, because we have to raise the money for Movies in the Park now for next summer and get our movies reserved. And, but the main thing is, we need to find people to carry the equipment. Eats and Beats, we'd like to do that again, the street dance. Who went? John was there, Mayor was there. Is that it? It was a lot of fun, and we think that, that went well. Project Friendship, we'll continue to administer Project Friendship until the money is gone. We served two families this week. Pancakes with Santa. See the man sitting in the middle up there? I talked to him into flipping pancakes and he saved us, not once, but twice. You didn't wear your hat?
No, I didn't wear my hat. Sorry, Dee. I do have a pretty slick hat, I will bring it to the next meeting.
You may want to check out our Facebook page, because there may be pictures there. And Facebook page, not last but not least, because our past president, Lael Doherty, who is way younger than we are, she is way younger than our children, she is not much older than one of my grandchildren, and she does our Facebook page, and she puts pictures up, and she puts events out, and she pushes those events. Do you know what pushing it means on Facebook? How many people know what that means? Brandy, yeah, Jim knows. Brandy, you don't know? It means that somehow Facebook gets it out to people who don't know about it, and it's cheap, cheap, cheap advertising. So we're starting to use that. So those are the things that we're working on now and that are kind of ongoing. We partner with Chisholm Trail Elementary School, Convention and Tourism Board, the Chamber of Commerce, the Chisholm Trail Seniors, the Park City High Flyers 4-H Club, which we started because we, and we wanted to help those kids and we sponsored them. That's a joke. Those kids show up and help us for everything. They do, they make the popcorn and the lemonade and serve it for Movies in the Park. I mean, every time we need them, they're there. Christ Lutheran Church, great partner with us, they will, they will provide volunteers, and they have a representative at every single meeting. New Anthem Community Church, great partner with us in a lot of ways, not just, they don't come to the meetings because they're young and busy, we understand that, but they, they support us financially and they support us with volunteers when we need them. Right now there are accumulations of groceries all over town. So many people help us, so many people work with us, and we're so grateful for that. One of the things I wanted to tell you about Pride is that it's, it's like the first time a lot of us volunteered. You know, we, and we didn't volunteer when we were 20, or 25, or 30, because we were home with kids, and some of us were working in, home with kids. But when we turned 50, or thereabouts, we started thinking, okay, kids are either gone or settled down, we have time, financially a little more stable than we probably were in our twenties or thirties, time to get back. But we were that age before we did that. And then, you know, then we found out that volunteering is not what people think it is. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, but it is amazing fun. You get into it and you do it once, and you think, well, I'm going to do this once and I'm, you know, I'll be a good person, because I'm giving back this one time. But you know, it's addictive, you have, you get such a good feeling, you end up getting more than you give. And so when, when we have a project, what'd you think?
Had a blast.
Had a blast. We do, we may yell at each other once in a while, but we have a wonderful time volunteering. And so in our effort to keep Park City Pride alive for the next generation, the generation after that, we're working on a lot of things. And hopefully, this organization will partner with us more than they have in the past. You are all welcome to our meetings. Ben Sosado came to our meeting Saturday morning. I know that Jan met with George. Yes? Friday morning, George.
Brandy.
And, Brandy? Were you there? Okay. At the, at the donut shop? Yeah. And that was great, because that's communication between us. So what we really want is to be working together with the governing body, the way we work with all these other bodies. Questions?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dee?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Kyle, did you want to speak in public forum? Okay.
I'm not responsible for what blabbermouth says here. I'm Kyle Lawson, I'm a member of the Park and Tree Board, for those of you that don't know me. I just thought I'd stop in and kind of let you guys know what we have going on. Some of, some of these items are on your agenda tonight, but for the end of the year, we intend on replacing a few things at the park, such as a slide, a rocket spring, rider, some, I don't know, same. That'll have to be in places because it'll often be placed and we have a ton to do all at one time. We're going to be doing some barbecue drills, maybe spring, and something. Add those to the park, so just kind of, kind of upgrade some safety needs and make some improvements to the park. I've been on the board for a year this month, and other members have been great to me. They've been great mentors, this is the first city board I've been on, so it's new experience for me, and they've really accepted me, and they're good references to me, so. When I first got on, Bruce offered to take me through the entire city, show me around. I've been there three years, but I really haven't, I really haven't gone to all the parks and everything, didn't even know about them all. Bruce, I spent a few hours on even, in all the parks and shit, and so he's been good to me, too. 2018, we'd like to do some upgrades to the shelters, made some cash payments, it'd be nice to replace some of them at McLean, but obviously, I haven't had that for the year. You did do a walk-through at the board at McLean, and that kind of gave us a lot of ideas for upgrades, and so we intend to do the rest of the parks in 2018 and go from there, so. Interested in working with you guys, and I just thought I'd stop in, let you know I think we're headed in the right direction and...
Kyle, I appreciate the leadership and what you brought to the park board, and I think this would be a good time to plug that we do have openings on the park board, so if anybody'd like to serve or volunteer in that capacity, feel free to get in touch with us at the front desk, we can get you an application and see if we can get some more bodies on the park board. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. Okay, that was all we had signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before my department comments, would like to provide an update on two public works projects that we recently started, the work for which our street department started to work at the intersection of Prospect and 61st Street. As of about 3:00 or 9:00 o'clock this morning, that area right there is closed through traffic. Pink quincing on that's going to be removing the asphalt, the base rock down, compact that for the concrete, after the concrete gets cured apart along, we'll reopen that. Expected duration of that may be 10 days. We're hoping to have that open by Christmas. Part of that's dependent on how long the concrete takes to do that and also the cure rate of that, each of these weather dependent, can be weather dependent. Also, water department, started the hydrant replacement, we started that the last Friday, one on Friday, two yesterday, and two today, so we have five of those. Also, did take the opportunity, since we've got those areas closed off, to do the hydro repairs, put two valves in. Try to do that where we can throughout this project. After my department comments, park department, 12:00 water tank at the street and park office at the... Last Monday, we said before, we stepped the delivery of the barbecue drills, we picked seven of those, currently have two of those installed, that have trays and jarred and parked in the vendors and coasting, falling down, so we got those removed and pulled off. Security department, at the intersection of 53rd and Broadway, we've overlogged, that project is now complete. Also, on the 53rd Street project from Broadway to Path My Line, still have to continue to inspect the floor, the area disturbed as a result of that project. KDHE, so we're working with KDHE and KDOT on that, we made an inspection on that November 28th, we'll have to continue to do that until we get the numbers of termination on that. Also, last Thursday, we had a malfunction with our traffic signals at 61st and Jacksonville, and then identified what the issue was. We'll speak more about that later in the meeting. What we did, that point was to put that on, the loop system is broken, but we had to put that on the timer. That's now on a timing basis, not on a detector basis. That was last Thursday, we did. Water department, Heather Jordan was today to deliver those 25. Questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any, thank you. Next, we have our Finance Director, Danielle Rivas. Danielle?
Mayor and Council, I am presenting a year-end projection for our general fund and our utility fund. We like to keep a close eye on our, our general fund, especially at year-end, because of cash balance reserves. Normally this is done in the, in the, next to the last council meeting, we're the last council meeting of the year, and there's a true-up done in early January. The next council meeting will have a more comprehensive projected balance, along with all cash, all funds, all fund balances, excuse me. I know this is a lot of information, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we were last year and where we are this year. At the end of, I project out at the end of 2017 to be right, right about where we were at the end of 16. There are many factors to take into consideration for these numbers. First, ad valorem taxes are up this year. Our valuation went up in 2016, which accounts for the increased collection of revenue. Sales tax, sales tax has remained pretty stagnant over the last five years. It hovers over 1.1 to 1.2 million, so there's not a lot of movement there. Our building permits, as you can see, were, we've exceeded the $40,000 budgeted revenue target, we're almost into the $100,000 range, and that's due to our increase in building permits, commercial permits we're building. I believe we're going to exceed the 2016 revenue numbers. Municipal court fines are down, we've talked about that in the past. I believe this may, there may be a lot of factors involved, but I know that we have been not fully staffed in the police department, which may be a factor in this collection. Overall, the budgeted revenues, the projected budgeted revenues is 4.8 million, and our actually budgeted revenues, excuse me, is the 4.828 million. We're pretty much on target. I project at year-end, we collect about 40,000 over what we had actually budgeted. Again, this is only a projection, you will have more of a true-up next month. Okay, now for expenses, this is a general fund projected expense report. I have 2016 numbers compared to 2017 numbers. As you can see, we actually did a little bit better this year than we did last year, taking into consideration that we did move buildings, and we did not account for the extra expenditures that were, that were expended out of general fund. For example, the increase in personal property and liability insurance that had to be covered in general fund, the increase in commodity payments, excuse me, contractual payments or commodity payments for higher electric bill. Taking those into consideration, I still project that our, our total budgeted expenditures are going to be less than last year. Our budgeted expenditures is 5.1 million in general fund with a projected expenditure through the end of the year at 4.8 million, which leaves us about 300,000 unspent via the general fund budget. Cash balances, I start looking at cash balances at year-end, we like to keep, thank you, we keep an eye out on that cash reserve for two reasons. One, we need to make sure we have a healthy fund. Secondly, our cash reserve policy states that we will have 20% operating reserve in general fund, which as you can see is, our reserve policy says we'll have about $1 million in our general fund at year-end, which is 20% of that 5.1 million adopted budget. I project at year-end to have about 880,000, which is right below that 1 million. We knew that going into the year that we would drop under that 1 million. Last year, we carried over 834,000, so we're actually doing a little better, we're carrying over cash. We project to carry over some cash at year-end. I do want you to take into consideration that those actual, if you look at the screen, there's actual amount at the very bottom, and these are actually cash carryover balances. So we went from 2012 having a million or so to pretty close five years later. I will note that in 2014, we did carry over $2 million. There was a transaction that happened, we sold some land and that, that money got deposited into general fund, it was transferred back out the following year. Our utility fund, just a quick, quick little update, our utility fund... Start off with revenue. This year has been, has been very good to us. We have, excuse me, we, we projected 1.4 million in the water revenue line, we've just, we project to exceed that by two and a half percent, almost 3%. Just so you, just a reminder, in January of this year, we increased water and sewer rates by 2%. That may be attributed to the increase in revenue. Water sales are slightly down, but that increase in fee is, is why we have that extra revenue. Same goes for sewer and trash, pretty much remains the same, so. Utility fund, I have, revenues are, were doing pretty well in this one. As far as expenditures... In 2017, we are keeping, keeping an eye on that water fund. We're pretty close to our fully budgeted utility amount, which is 3,600,000. We, I project to be at 3,47,000. That could be attributed to some higher debt payments, and we hired, we have a new utility employee that we, that you guys approved at the, at the beginning of this year. I have no concerns about the utility fund, actually, I'm, I'm pretty happy with where we're at. Sit this way. Sorry. Like I said, this was just a quick summary, just to give you an idea of, of where we are at as of, as of today. General fund is healthy. I want you to know that we've done a great job of making sure that, that we keep down those last-minute expenditures. I know that in December, we kind of tried to get all the, all our invoices paid, but we're doing pretty well, considering we had a huge capital project this year, which was moved- considering we had a huge capital project this year, which was moving buildings. I do want to say that GFWA best practices. Asks that our city keep, at a minimum, no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues, excuse me. And at a minimum, our general fund needs to have 853,000. That's my target. I would like the million in there, I would really like to see that general fund grow. But 850,000 will keep us in the green and our, when we go out for bonds, as long as we keep that 850, we're, we're good. I would like to see a strategy to increase our general fund balance. Our utility fund, like I said, water sales are up, water usage is slightly down, but the 2% fee increase that was approved earlier in the year is helping us grow that fund. The beginning of the year, any cash carryover will be brought to you to see if you'd like to transfer any of that into the utility operating reserve fund for the capital project of growing your water treatment plant in the years to come. Any questions?
Randy?
So the, the policy says 20% for general fund revenue, and we're below the policy. So how's that going to affect if we were to go out for bonds or anything that the bond council's seeing that we're under policy?
Last year, we went out for bonds and we were under, under that 20%. And we showed that we had a plan. We projected out, we had a three-year to five-year plan where we would get that balance back up to that million. They saw that we had a, a large project, and we showed, I believe, the sale of our city building as a potential revenue to get that general fund up. And our bond, bond council was okay with that. So we also had very strong fund balances in our capital project fund and our utility reserve funds. We have over two or three million that could help subsidize general fund, and they were, they were good with that, too.
And then also, with the recent changes that we made in the health insurance and the savings that we see off of that, that should drastically improve carryover as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Danielle? Not seeing any, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is there a motion? Tom?
I'm eating humble pie, because I was trying to pick out which one of these agenda, or which one of the minutes were bad. It's the 28th, not the 14th. I need to ask legal, is there anything we can do? The men, the agenda was amended to delete the 14th, but the 8th, the 28th's the one that's got the error in it.
You could make a motion to undo that and, and make the minutes of the 28th, item M.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second? Gary? Okay. A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight-zero. Bring us back to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I would make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
And Jim?
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes eight-zero. That brings us to new business. Under new business, item A is a public hearing, so I will open this public hearing at 7:34 PM for the budget amendment. Danielle, do you want to speak to that?
Mayor and Council, at the last council meeting, we explained that we have two funds that will exceed our allowed budget authority at year-end. Those two funds are the Special Street and Highway Fund, which, in some background information, in early 2016, City Council approved a $300,000 transfer into general fund. Excuse me, into Special Street and Highway for additional street projects. Unfortunately, in 2016, we were unable to bid out those projects, which carried tho, those monies into 2017. We are now in the process of spending that money and need the additional budget authority. Secondly, our bond and interest fund, early in 2017, we issued bonds totaling 2.5 million. The issue was for reimbursement of the 53rd Street project. So we carried that project for a year and a half, and then the 2017 bonds reimbursed the city. That money was deposited into bond and interest fund and then allocated out to the funds to reimburse them. That counts as an expenditure through the state, and we need additional budget authority to do that as well.
Okay, I'll ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak at this public hearing. Not seeing any, does any council members have anything they'd like to add? Not seeing any, I'll close this public hearing at 7:35 PM. And that'll bring us to item B, which is consider the adoption of the 2017 budget amendment. Gary?
Make a motion that we adopt the budget amendment as presented.
And John?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. That brings us to item C, which is consider an ordinance amending and supplementing an ordinance number 1038-2017 of the City of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the issuance of its industrial revenue bond, Series 2017, Air Capital Investments LLC, for the principal amount of 13,500,000. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is real similar to the ordinance that you passed last meeting. The problem with that ordinance was it had air capital delivery, and it should have been air capital investments. And so basically, it's the same ordinance you passed last time, except the wording has changed to Air Capital Investments LLC in lieu of air capital delivery. But other than that, it's the same ordinance.
So I'm showing, looks like somebody's there, but then Tom's second, so Tom?
I'll make a motion, we approve the ordinance as written.
Is there a second? John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight-zero.
That is ordinance 1039-2017.
Thank you, Danielle. That brings us to item D, which is consider a resolution delineating the boundaries of the City of Park City as of December 31st, 2017. Jack, you want to give your annual presentation on this?
Well, not much has changed. I think all of you, except maybe Brandy, might be a little bit familiar with this. The county came to us and made a deal that they would pave portions of hydraulic in 77th if we would go ahead and consider annexing that right-of-way, which we did, and as a result of that, it's included now in our update, as you may have before you, as the resolution. Always go back through every resolution. As you can see, it's a lot of, you might call it gibberish, but a lot of technical meets and bounds descriptions and stuff, so it's real easy to make an error, error on it. One of the things that has to accompany the resolution to the Secretary of State is a map, and this map will be, along with that, I put the section numbers, and that's with the dot with the number in it, that's the center of a section. If you look at it, it's a mile square. So that someone who has a lot of time on their hands wants to read the resolution and follow it on the map, they have a map to do that. So this is something that we have to do annually and, and declare our boundaries to the Secretary of State every year. Since this is the last meeting of the year, we went ahead and put it on this agenda. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Anybody have any questions for you? Gary?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution delineating the boundaries of City Park City as of December 31st, 2017.
And John?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that passes eight-zero.
That is Resolution 977-2017.
Thank you, and that brings us to item E, which is consider engineering contracts for the High Ridge Water and Sewer. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a formality, and goes along with the resolutions of advisability that the council approved last meeting. This will allow the engineers to begin the design of the water and sewer to service those 30 properties. They're at the corner of 69th and Hydraulic, which are duplex properties. And the contract is with Botman Company, who has been doing all the engineering work on High Ridge.
Thank you, Jack. Tom?
Make a motion, we approve the. Item E.
Okay. And John?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. The next item on the agenda is consider a new agreement with Waste Connections for Trash Service, and Herschel? Did you want to come up? All right.
I thought I was here just to answer questions. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Herschel with Waste Connections. Hopefully, everything has been going well with the City of Park City, service-wise, trash, recycling. For the existing agreement that expired December 31st of 2018, we are allowed a, an increase in January of 18. So I thought myself, well, I'd like to get an extension on the agreement, or get it up to the end of the year this time. Got with Dana and talked to her about maybe foregoing price increase, which would have been about a 34 cent increase, January 2018, to get a new updated five-year rate. A lot of current rates in that you're paying now for two years. An increase for, until the third year, 2% increase in the third, or 2% increase in the third year, 2% increase in the fourth year, 2% increase in the fifth year. Hopefully, in doing that, she mentioned about going and doing the process to do the complete franchise for trash and recycling. Trash going toward, recycling going toward. And in doing that, it's like an 18-month, 24-month process, and we hope that will be towards the middle of the agreement, and keep it in the middle, and look at maybe reducing the price a little bit more. Maybe when that second year comes around, if everything goes well, and we franchise the trash and recycling, maybe we can give a little bit better pricing.
Jack, did you have anything like that?
Just for your edification, under this agreement, trash would be $11.60, which is stable. Recycling is $3.85 for a total of $15.45 a month.
So I think the last time we looked, I think, John, you may have asked me to look into this, were we 98%? Was that what I got back? Of, of people with, that are using our trash service?
It was in the 90s, I don't recall how, what it was at.
Some reason I have 93 or 98 in my head.
I have 90, I have, it's more like 93.
Okay. Okay, I was 93 or 98, I can't remember exactly which that was. So it might be something that, that the council wants to consider as far as looking into franchising later, because that is so high where we could potentially get a reduced rate that would benefit our citizens even more in the trash and recycling service. Jack?
Also, should note that they're increasing the number of transfer coupons to 60. I don't know what it is now.
It was 45.
Yes.
The city paid for, anything above 45, we're going to increase that to 60.
Yeah.
And I think, so far this year, maybe 73.
Right.
Total, so you pay, so that's not too bad, I mean, you'll just have to pay for 13 more. It's the same number for next year, and we'll continue to provide service, you know, to city facilities.
Does anybody have any questions? George?
Just a question, we've got along 61st Street, we've got several. I say several, probably six, eight memorial benches. And I've noticed, as I walk along daily, that people are dumping trash around those. And is there, is, would it be possible to have a smaller trash container, or do you folks do anything like that?
We could, we may have some smaller, like 35-gallon cart.
Yeah.
Probably something about that size.
Well, you know, it's, it's kind of, there's kind of a beautification thing through there, so you wouldn't want a big thing. But I'd sure like to see some way for people that's leaving some of the fast food places and stuff, someplace to dump their trash instead of just tossing it.
I could look at maybe providing a small, it'll look just like the big 95-gallon, but it's 35.
I think, I understand where George is going with this, but this is probably something we need to look at from a beautification standpoint, to make sure we have a nicer receptacle.
I was just asking if it's possible.
Yeah.
If they'd do that. Because your trucks run right down those front of the roads, anyway.
I don't think that'd be a problem, I could look in, I could ask, get back in there.
Okay, I was just asking if they could do that.
It, it might be that we get the nicer receptacles, our guys pull the bags out.
That's what I think.
And set them out for his guys to go by and pick them up.
Right. And I, and that's something that we probably need to look at, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Herschel? Does anybody want to make a motion? Or a suggestion, or a conversation? John?
Make a motion, we approve the agreement for the trash service.
Okay, Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes eight-zero. Herschel, thank you for taking the time to come tonight.
Thank you very much.
Tom?
I have a question before he gets away. And I asked Dana a while back about what could go in recycle bin, because things change, at one time Styrofoam wasn't allowed, but it's got the seal on the bottom of it. I don't know what you're taking these days, is there a list that, that we can publish?
Yeah, I can get Dana a list.
Okay.
That way you can put it somewhere on your website.
Okay. Because I know you look at it, and well, I ought to be able to recycle it, and then you find out you can't, so. Okay, I appreciate that.
You may make a note, because I will forget.
And one other thing while you're doing that is the calendar that shows the dates of trash service, especially when there's holidays during the week. Be a good thing we could publish on social media.
While we're talking about the holidays. There, there's only, what holiday do you actually not run on? Because.
Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. Every Monday, you know, Memorial Labor Day, we're out there ordering. It's usually a day behind, Christmas is on Monday, so all Monday stops. So we'll do the day, so we'll be ordering sad.
I think once we get the list for the recycle, we can post those three specific dates. I think once we get the list for the recycle, we can post those three specific dates with that information on trash service.
So this year, our trash day, which is normally Tuesday, will be Wednesday. Yeah. Do a social media blast on that, too.
Yeah. Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item G, which is consider bids for a three-quarter ton single cab and chassis to be paid out of the utility surplus fund. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are requesting council's consideration on the purchase of a three-quarter ton cab and chassis. Written specifications for this. Major components of the specifications that we included are based on our existing truck similar to this in our fleet. Three-quarter ton work truck, V-eight motor, automatic transmission, air conditioning, vinyl interior helps us to help keep that clean. White exterior, which is consistent with our fleet now, undercoating. This just includes a regular cab and chassis, no bed on this. What we're looking to do is take our existing three-quarter ton truck and move that to our maintenance department. And then our water department would trade in a ninety-five half-ton on that. Essentially, what that allows us to do is for Nick and the maintenance department to have a mobile unit to arrive on multiple job sites with tools and parts already on hand. This would be a very good benefit for him. Our existing tanker is a two thousand two, three-quarter ton. It's eighty-eight thousand miles, which this is, which is less than six thousand miles per year. This isn't a truck that we get out every day. It's a specific project truck. It's got the steel bed on it, multiple tool bins on that. This would be a good benefit for Nick and his guys, or guy, to cut down downtime, to go somewhere and already have the parts and tools on that that he needs on that. When we sent the bids out, we sent the bids to six dealers. Donovan, Rusty Eck, Hubers, Mel Hamilton, Don Hatton, and Davis Moore. We received two of the bids back from Hatton and Davis Moore. They each were willing to give us a thousand dollars on our trade-in, which is a pretty good price on that. Including the trade-in, the thousand-dollar trade-in. Hatton's was twenty-five thousand nine hundred. Davis Moore was twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety. We would recommend to council to accept the lowest bid on this.
John?
Unless you see any other discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the low bid from Davis Moore for the Dodge Ram for twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety dollars.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
And are you good, Mel?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. And the next item, which is item H, which is consider bids for the utility bed to be paid out of the utility surplus fund. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Close and packet is specifications for the bed for the cabin chassis that we just looked at. As it indicated, this matches the specifications of our existing tanker, which works really well for us. You may have seen these, quite a few of these trucks around. It's the one with the big toolboxes on the side. This one has two vertical shelving units on each side and one horizontal with the flip-top lids on this. The bed is a tread paint floor, the steel floor with the little grippers on that. We did send that out to bids for to three locations, and we received three bids back. Sent the bids out to Midwest Truck, Truck Parts and Equipment, Kansas Truck Center. The bid, the lowest bid was six thousand six hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents. Highest bid, seven thousand dollars, seven thousand and fifty-nine dollars. All vendors meet our specifications on this. Would like to note to council that the difference that Midwest Truck is a local vendor for us. They're right across the street from us. They are three hundred and eighty-eight dollars more. If we ever have to have any service issues, it's, it couldn't be any better for us geographically to go across the street. All vendors meet the specifications, so however, council would like to proceed with that.
So I think what we're looking at here is using a local company. Even though that the bid is higher, and our policy states that's something that the council can do, even though it's not the lowest bid, but it's within a range. And I think this is a great idea when we have time, especially when these are kind of tight together on what they're looking at. Rick brings up a good point. If anything needed service or anything, it's simply a trip in town to get taken care of, so. I think what Rick's saying, and I would agree, would be we recommend that Midwest Truck, even though it's a higher bid, then we make that selection. Melvin?
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid, bid of seven thousand fifty-nine dollars to Midwest Truck for the bid.
And George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you very much, Rick. That brings us to item I, which is consider approval of a K-State First Impression Program. You have this pamphlet in your packet, and this is something Dee brought through me through Pride. That was something that they were looking at. And we had our goal setting in our meeting last night, and I think this actually kind of coincides with that. But really what it does, and there's no cost involved whatsoever. But K-State will send a group of people out with a questionnaire from another community within an hour or so up here. And basically, they're just going to write down first impressions, what they see when they first get here, how they feel welcomed. We talked a lot last night at our meeting about some beautification or pieces. But anyway, that's going to just compile some information and give back to us. Now, what the cost is for us is that when they have a community that's within that hour driving range, they will ask us to go do the same thing. So we would have some meal expense and, and fuel expense to send people from our community to also be to go and do the same thing for somebody else. K-State won't do this unless they have council's permission. So basically, it's just getting your approval to let K-State go ahead and do this First Impression Program and that we had participated in that. Melvin?
I think this sounds like a pretty good deal. I'll make a motion that we approve that.
George?
I'll second it.
Okay, and George?
Are we going to make this public, the results of it?
We probably, yeah, can.
I know we paid K-State a bunch of money here a year or so ago, a couple of years ago, for a survey. And that was never made public. The results of it, as far as I know, was never made public. I think some people saw it, but it was never made public.
It's still posted on the website. A link to it, and you can open the whole PDF file and download it.
Okay.
Anybody else?
But I will say, we didn't follow the results of that. What, what K-State's recommendations were and what they found from our citizens, we never paid no attention to it. It was disregarded. Just pointing that out.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda is item J, which is consider payout of vacation hours for law enforcement employees with balances in excess of the two-hundred-and-eight-hour maximum carry over as provided by the City of Park City, Kansas Personnel Policy at an estimated cost of eight thousand four hundred twenty dollars and fifty-six cents from police salaries. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council members. I also thought I'd give you a quick update on where we are as far as our staffing, so. Because this ties into what I'm about to ask you for. Police Department currently has three open positions. That would be out of an authorized total of seventeen commissioned officers, which includes me. So we're short, we have three that are just open. We're in the process of hiring right now. We're beginning to get to the end of that hiring process, so. We have one officer who's newly hired, who's at the academy right now, so that would make four that we really don't have on the street. We also have one officer who's currently on medical leave. That makes five that we're short. We have one officer that's just finishing his, his field training, so that's the last process. Still the last stage rather than the training process, so. That really makes six, but he's just about to go out on his own hopefully this weekend. Bottom line is that right now, we're short five out of seventeen, so we're down, down by almost thirty percent. We're still in a position where if officers take a day off for any reason, whether that's, you know, vacation or sick leave, comp time, whatever it might be, another officer has to come in and work overtime, and that's just to maintain our minimum coverage. And for that reason, we've been in this position for quite some time now, so. For that reason, it's been difficult for officers to take vacation. And I know I've mentioned earlier this year to the council that we were probably going to be facing a vacation overage. By policy, we have a limit of two-hundred-and-eight hours that personnel can carry over into the next year. Normally, they would lose that if they don't use it. We're in a position where they, we have four who have not been able to take it off. We would be in a worse position. We would have more than four who are going to go over were it not for the fact that we have so many new officers or been hired here just in recent years, and they don't accrue vacation that quickly, so they're not bumping up against that two-hundred-and-eight-hour limit. Our finance director, Daniella, has calculated the cost of paying out the overage for these four officers and bringing it down to the limit of two-hundred-and-eight hours. And that amounts in your packet there, eight thousand four hundred twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. And that would be paid out of the current police budget. And I would respectfully ask for your authorization to make that up for these employees. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Melvin?
I'll make the motion that we approve the eight thousand four hundred twenty, fifty-six out of the police budget for the overtime.
And John?
I'll second, but I have a question, too.
Okay.
I know the county does this, but do we, do our employees have the ability to transfer overages like this rather than into cash? Transfer it like into their discretionary spending account? Or at the end of the year where they can spend the money on other medical expenses and things like that? Trying to think of what the cafeteria-type plan?
Flex spending?
Yes, can they do anything like that to where it's not taxed?
No, we, at least it's not in our policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Jim? Hey, one question. A few of them are, and we've got some people in training and on medical leave and whatnot, but how, do you anticipate how long it will be before we start getting more fully staffed with the people we already have?
Well, it's going to depend on our current crop of applicants and it's, I hate to make a prediction I can't fulfill, so.
Well, I was just thinking the people that are in the pipeline.
Sure, right. My hope is that we'll be able to fill those three positions. The next academy class that we can get them into is February twenty-sixth. Starts February twenty-sixth. We have to have their names to the academy one month in advance, which means January twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Usually, if we offer them a job, they have to give at least two weeks' notice, so. That backs it up to the middle of January, so we have to have all the background investigation, everything done by the middle of January, which puts us at right at one month left to get people in the February twenty-sixth class. And that class runs fourteen weeks, so that's about three and a half months. If you add that up, it comes up to about June before they would graduate. And then another three and a half months of field training after that, so you're talking to get them out on the street, probably September, October.
Okay.
That's if they're not certified. We do have some applicants who are certified. I hate to speculate publicly on whether they're not, whether or not they're going to be successful.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
George?
We had to do this last year, too, didn't we? You know, the only problem I have with this is officers work a very stressful shift, day in and day out. And vacation time and time off is very important. They need to get their rest. They need to have their recreation. And when you're working officers like this and, and not giving them the vacations and stuff, then well, I don't know, I just don't think it's a healthy deal. I don't know what it'd take to solve this, but we need to find some way to get the officers' time off as opposed to paying the deal, because well, I've took the same training you have. You know what I'm talking about. That's all I got.
Okay, Brandy?
I was just going to clarify on John's comment about what the county does. The county takes the, the employee has the opportunity to take that leftover vacation balance and roll it over to pay for their health benefits. I don't think they can do it for like flex spending or anything, but it did, it'll pay for medical dental vision.
Okay. Could be any follow-up question, John, for Brandy on how that works? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next item on the agenda is item K, which is consider the extension of home buyers' incentive program. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In talking to our realtor and how people are embracing our incentive program, I recommend that we continue it. Maybe with one adjustment, and that is on the duplex. Right now, if the taxes are paid, the builder gets six thousand dollars if he has both sides leased at one time. I recommend that we move it down to around four thousand if they've paid their taxes. Reason I say that is we've got thirty coming on down at 69th and Hydraulic. Hydraulic. I was kind of told this, that our incentive program would, if somebody bought those, that they'd actually be getting it for free because our incentives would pay the $6,000 per lot cost that the seller wants to sell them at. I don't think that was our, really our intent to do that, but that's just the reality of it. So that's just a recommendation. We can continue on, but if they go in and build 20 or 30 at a whack and we're putting $6,000 at a whack out, we may end up with a budget problem. So I was thinking maybe we need to tone it down just a little bit. In fact, on the housing, right now, it's $5,000 if they lease it, and I got three today. People that are building and leasing. That's a good thing, you know, it goes on the tax rolls as long as these people continue to pay their specials, because the builder still owns the house. And he still needs to pay those specials. If he leases them and doesn't pay the specials, then we got a problem.
John?
I have a question. On our building permits to date, what are we, where are we at as compared to last year or previous two or three years?
I wasn't able to get that number, but I believe we're ahead of last year. I think last year was about 28.
The end of October, we were even. And now I think we're two or three ahead. And when I spoke to Bob this morning, he said somebody else was coming in to pull some more permits. So we're probably three to five over what we were last year.
So when you do a duplex, do you count that as two builds or just one?
Two.
I'll make a motion we approve with recommendations that Jack gave on duplexes, on all of them.
Alright, Jim?
I like this program, so I'd second it.
Yeah? We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item L, which is consider installing traffic control cameras at 61st Street and Jacksonville. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mentioned in the Public Works Report, had a malfunction of the signals at 61st and Jacksonville slash Hatton last week. We done troubleshooting on that. Identified that we have two loops that are shorted out. The current configuration on this, how these signals work at that intersection is the eastbound on 61st is controlled by a camera. And the three other directions are what we call a loop system, which is a wire going into the cabinet that runs underneath the surface of the road. It forms a triangle in each of the control points on the three other portions of the road. So a car enters that, detects a frequency changes, activates the cycle. Last Thursday, we switched that over to a timer. For the most part, you're not going to notice the difference. In rush hour, you will notice the difference. We've seen it backed up a little bit today. Choices are to do nothing on that, which I would think that you're probably going to get calls as far as the length of times that these lights are set up, to put another loop system in, which you'd have to saw cut the road and we're looking at maybe doing some work at that intersection. So I don't know that that's that feasible. Or to install three cameras. We did get two bids on installing the three cameras. First bid was from Phillips Southern Electric. The price was $18,998. The second bid that we received from Sims Electric was $21,975. Would recommend to council to take the lowest bid. There's a difference of almost $3,000 on that. Both contractors are well-known in this area, have done a lot of work for us, and both of these would be acceptable. But we would recommend to go with the lowest bid from Phillips Southern for $18,998.
Okay, John?
I'll make a motion we approve Phillips Southern Electric for their bid of $18,998.
And Jim?
I'd second for discussion, a quick question. Any difference, or what's the timing on installing these? Is one faster than the other?
I'm sorry?
Is one contractor faster than the other? How long does it take to install this and change this? If we have a traffic issue, do we need to factor in time?
We actually didn't get as far to get, when can you start date? Both of these contractors are very responsive to us. The day that we originally had the issue, we got a response from one that day. Normal expectations, I would expect a week.
Okay.
We haven't got with them, but that's normally what that is. This isn't a overly difficult, they will have to pull wires under the road and connect them to the control. I would estimate a week. Probably take a day to do the project. It just, I would estimate a week for them to get started.
Okay, I'm not worried about a week, I was more thinking of a month, so.
Exactly. Yeah, I'd like to go before Christmas season gets here.
Yeah, I continue to second that motion.
Daniella, did you?
I would like to just clarify where this is, I wasn't part of the conversation, where this is going to be paid out of.
Special Street Highway.
Thank you.
John and Jim, that was Special Street.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight zero. That brings us to, thank you, Rick, sorry. That brings us to item M, which is consider amending the minutes of the November 28th, 2017 meeting. Tom?
I emailed staff correction, there's a name in the 27th or 28th minutes that needs to be changed.
What's to change?
It was listed as Jim Schroder.
It is, it is under the consent agenda, under the appropriations. It says council member Jim Leonard. I have changed that to John Leonard.
That was my correction.
Okay.
And I sent it, and I thought we might get it updated tonight, and that's why I asked the question at the beginning, so. And then I couldn't find it to correct it, so well, that'd be brought back the next meeting.
Why can't we approve it now?
We just amended it right now.
Okay, okay. I'd make a motion we approve it as amended.
Second?
John, second?
John Leonard, yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes eight zero. We'll start with the council. Jim?
I just wanted to say to thank the Pride members and the Park Board for the update. I appreciate all you guys too and you ladies too. That was, that was good to hear, so thank you.
Brandy?
I just have a couple of things. First, I want to say for the Pride, they're doing, filling backpacks on Sunday at 1:00. I know myself, and I'm taking my family with me, and all Ben Sissata's going, so I would love for some people come out and help and get involved with Pride. I've reached out to a few guys that I work with at the county that live in Park City that are younger, and I've encouraged them to maybe get involved. So if you're young, you're strong, you are, you're willing to help, come out and help. So we keep this going. Second, Clambers Station with Over Coffee. The next meeting is going to be January 6th, which is a Saturday, at the Pastry Place at 8:00 AM. And I believe Ben has gotten Congressman Ron Estes, and he'll be attending that, that meeting as well. So come out and have some coffee.
Alright. George?
This is our last meeting of the month, isn't it, Mayor? Well, to all the Christians out there, I'll say Happy Merry Christmas and to people, all other people, just have a happy holidays.
Wish everybody a happy holiday.
Melvin?
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Yeah, I too like everything Pride was doing there, or it does do, and keep it up, so.
I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
George?
Yeah, I also would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we get ready to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior. In Hebrews 13:5, Jesus says, "I will never leave you or forsake you, even to the end of the age." So that's the joy and the hope that we have this holiday season. Thank you.
John?
I guess something I want to touch on, I guess what Brandy had talked about, I would like to see us maybe have a discussion about possibly offering that type of a benefit to our employees that we have this carryover balances that we could transfer it in and do something similar to what the county is. At least have the discussion to see if it's something we can do.
I think that's something we can look at. And then, you know, one thing I wanted to bring up too was several weeks ago, we had a special meeting to look at our employees' health insurance. And myself, a couple of staff members, two council members helped join me in developing a plan for how we could save the city money and put more money back in our employees' pockets. I would like to say that the employees spoke when it came time to enroll for insurance. And where we had the Westling only option, 60% of our people jumped on that, really showing that the pay is very important. So I know I took a big grilling and beating over bringing that to come in here. And I also want to say that we're now starting the process of doing the salary survey, because during that meeting too, council also authorized us to put $100,000 towards employee pay raises. And now we're going to start working on that process. Hopefully have something from the salary side of it by that second meeting of February for council to look at and approve. So, you know, that was a rough meeting. It spoke volumes when people signed up and what happened. Had to sign up at open enrollment. So I just want to say, we'll have some more numbers later where we'll get to see total savings towards the city. But there was a $400,000 savings we showed. And we talk about carryover balance and putting that back in and putting more money in our employees' pockets instead of paying the insurance companies. We did a good thing.
I guess the only thing I would want to add to that is we also, by doing this, it makes us operate more efficiently and it also keeps money in our citizens' pockets too by, well, prolonging her, her reducing the chance of us having a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight zero.